Let's go. Welcome back to the Inside Lines where we talk about politics and news shaping the lives of New Jerseyans. I'm your host, George, and today we're excited, or I'm excited, to bring you another important conversation about the issues impacting our community. Joining us today is Jay Costa, candidate for Bergen County Commissioner. Jay is a lifelong Bergen County resident, a small business owner, and a proud product of our public schools. He's stepping into the political arena with a bold message centered on fiscal responsibility, government transparency, and restoring trust in local leadership. Now, for those who may not know, Bergen County Commissioners oversee critical county services, manage the budget, and help shape policies that affect all residents. And here on the Inside Lines, we believe it's essential to hear directly from candidates so that you can make informed decisions when you head to the polls. Today, we'll talk with Jay about what inspired him to run, the challenges he sees in the county, and how he plans to make local government work better for all of us. We'll dig into the topics that matter to you, the voters, to better understand his perspective and priorities. I'm grateful to have him on, Jay Costa. Welcome to the show, my friend. Thanks for coming by.
Thanks for having me, George, but I do want to correct you on one thing.
Yeah.
Public school, did not go to public school at all until college, actually.
Okay.
College of New Jersey, I guess that's a state school, so it's public school, but before that Catholic school, pretty much my whole life.
Catholic school? Sorry about that. I gotta work on my research a little bit.
I don't want someone coming after me saying, "Oh, he says he's from public school system. He went to private with a silver spoon in his mouth."
Yeah, that's okay too. I went to public school, not for my whole time, but up to eighth grade, and then my parents sent me to private, so I understand that, but you know.
Well, let me just say, so I went to Catholic school, grammar school, and then high school, Bergen Catholic in Noradell. But my three younger brothers all went to public school for high school. And I always noticed, actually, maybe it's different now because this is 20 years ago, but I always actually noticed that they had more of a workload responsibility on their hands from public school than I did at Catholic school, for what it's worth.
So you kind of lucked out, I guess?
Maybe.
All right.
Or I was just a crappy student.
No, I don't think you're crap. I think, right off the bat, I think you're a great guy, and I'm so glad to have you on the show.
Thank you, George. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
And on this show, I'd just like to dive straight in, you know? I don't want to hear about, well, I do want to hear about your background, but I just kind of want to first start with, what inspired you to run? I mean, you're not involved in politics. I haven't heard your name, honestly, until you announced that you're running. I did research on you. You have an amazing social media following, which we'll talk about that later on. But what inspired you to run?
So, well, just a little bit of background. I know it gets kind of like boring, but just because I'm a newcomer, I've been in Bergen County my entire life. I grew up in Norwood. Like I said, went to Bergen Catholic High School, College of New Jersey for political science. I now, I'm in real estate and building and development in the area. I now live in Rivervale with my wife, soon to be, about to have my third daughter soon.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. And I've been a conservative Republican for my entire life, like pretty much since out of the womb, honestly. Good, bad, or indifferent. And among many other reasons, which is what we'll get into, I'm sure, in this podcast, the biggest reason is very general and very simple. I'm running to bring our conservative Republican values back to county government where they belong and where they've been missing for so long. The Democrats should not have all seven seats on the county board.
Agreed.
I didn't even know that until, like, right before I decided to run, and that was a big reason why I decided, like, okay, that's insane. Because I've been, once again, been here my whole life. It's blue, but it's not that blue, right? I mean, that, and just that issue alone, I think if the voters knew, because if I didn't know, trust me, they don't know. If they knew that alone, they want checks and balances, whether you ask a Democrat, independent, Republican, checks and balances, good thing, democracy, constitutional republic, that's what you want. That's really the main reason, the most general, basic, simple answer I can give you, why I'm running. Because all you, you can't have one party rule, you can't have just something going through, rubber stamp, bam. Because when that happens, budgets get out of control, things aren't looked upon. You need someone with our values, and I think we have pretty much similar values based on our discussion before this. You need someone with our values, at least at the table, when these decisions are being made. Just, at the very least, they just have to listen to me bitch and complain about something. So it starts here, because even if, there's only three seats up this year on the county board, even if we win all three, we're still a minority. It's four to three, so, but that's how it starts. That's politics, right? Because they haven't won in 13 years, as I mentioned, the Republicans on the county level in Bergen County. And I'm here, and we're here as well, with my, I have two other running mates as well, here to make sure that that doesn't happen again this year.
So I liked what you said right off the bat about having a balance. And there are some towns in Bergen County that don't have a balance.
Right.
And it doesn't, it doesn't bode well with me, because it doesn't seem like there's a fair representation of the people, right? Elected officials should be voices for the people, and when you have one party rule for this long, there needs to be some change. And I believe that's what you're saying, right? There's just not a fair representation of Bergen County. Like you said, we're not deep blue, right? We're blue and red and a lot of different mixtures, and we're also very diverse as a community.
Extremely, maybe the most.
The most diverse in the country, right? So how do you intend to engage with and represent the diverse communities within our county?
It's a great question. As we were speaking about before, the different communities in this area are crazy. I mean, my wife is not from here. She's from Massachusetts, which is much less diverse. When she moved here, she, I mean, and she's still every day, like, flabbergasted in regards to what she sees, like, and it's a beautiful thing, actually, where you can go to a, like, whatever, a supermarket or whatever, and just see, like, 18 different colors and shades and hairstyles and all sorts of stuff going on, and it's a good thing. So the Republican Party has always been a certain demographic in the past, and the Democrat Party's been a certain demographic in the past. And some of those still hold true, but a lot of them are, don't, and they're changing, and you see it in regards to the voting numbers. And you saw that last, you know, just last election. And this is not just New Jersey, it's nationwide. But New Jersey, I always felt like, was a great microcosm of the whole country because of the diverse population. And I would say Bergen County is a good microcosm of the whole state. We have a little bit of everything here. So anyway, back to my original point. Specifically, certain communities, the Hispanic community, all the ethnic backgrounds, basically other than white, are kind of leaning more, getting closer to red than they used to be. And the white population is actually getting closer to blue. You also see, it doesn't have to be, like, nationality or ethnicity, just income-wise, right? If you looked at Trump compared to Harris in the presidential election, the people that were making over 100 grand, 200 grand, 300 grand a year, whatever, were overwhelmingly blue, and vice versa on the other side. I find that to be a good thing, because there's more people, even in a high-income area like this, there's more people making less than 100 grand than there are probably more. And it's more a working-class, blue-collar party that our Republican Party's turning into, and the opposite on the other side. So I think a lot of those changes are happening just nationally with the media, with certain national identity politics and things like that, where you see a lot of these communities being open to the idea, finally, of supporting a Republican like myself.
Why do you think that's changing, though? Like, when you see, you know, I grew up in Bergen County too, very diverse. We've got Asians, we've got, we're in the midst of Korean town right here, huge Hispanic population. What do you think has given them that ability or understanding to kind of change? And, you know, if they've been voting, in the Korean, I'm Korean-American, so in the Korean population, there are a lot of people that vote Democrat, for the Democrat Party and not for the Republican Party. There are, there seems to be a little bit of a changing tide. Why do you think that's really happening, though? Like, what is it that it's like, "Oh, wow, you know what? I don't identify as a Democrat anymore." When I was kind of getting signatures last year, my primary question was, "Why are you Democrat?" And I found that no one.
Had a good answer.
Could answer, could answer that question.
Always been.
And it's, and that was like eye-opening to me. I mean, for you, you're on the trail, you're meeting with a ton of people, and you're having these conversations. What are they saying to you? What are they revealing?
Well, when it comes to the actual, like, specific communities and stuff, what I would say, and just nationally, I would say probably the biggest reason is just simply the proof is in the pudding, right? Like, you heard this a lot about the African-American community during the presidential election, like, I've been, if a certain group has been overwhelmingly supporting one side for so long, and nothing's really getting as much better as they were saying, like, human nature is like, "Hey, you know what? You've been telling me this for quite a while. I'm not 100% happy with you. I'm at least, once again, going to open up my perspective and not believe every single thing you tell me about the other side, and just hear what they have to say." That would be point number one. In regards to New Jersey, I never felt that it was an overwhelmingly blue state and an overwhelmingly blue area. I just felt like, phone's going off?
Yeah, sorry about that.
I like the ringtone.
Thank you. Note to people, turn off your freaking phones when you're doing a podcast.
So I never, I never felt that it was an overwhelmingly blue area here in Bergen County, as well as just the whole state of New Jersey. I just felt like our side was very apathetic towards the political process, right? And for some reason, over the years, we've just decided to, up until now, we've decided to give up on taking part in the political process as much as we should have. And we let it get to a point, and I think you could say the same thing about, maybe you could speak about this as well, about the school board, the school boards around the country, really, but specifically here, where it's like, "You know what? Hands are up. I'm out. I don't agree with you guys, so I'm gonna go send my kid to Catholic school," or whatever, instead of actually engaging in the process and speaking your mind, your truth, your values, and impressing them on the public, because that's politics. That's how it works, right? So you've been here your whole life, as have I. You hear it so much, my entire life, it's like, people like us think this state's too far gone, like, it's never gonna be saved, it's gonna be California in 10 years, whether you like it or not, and I'm not gonna vote for anybody, because it ain't even worth my time. You're all corrupt and whatever. Hey, listen, some of that, some of that has maybe some truth in it, but that's not politics. That's not how you, that's not how you win. You see people moving instead of actually engaging in the political process, and that's very, very concerning to me. Because, and that's another reason why I decided to run as well, being in real estate, as well as here my whole life. My, all of my friends, I'm one of the very few people, I'm sure, I bet you could say the same, that I grew up with that actually stayed here in Bergen County. That's sad.
It is sad. I mean, look, I, all my friends have gone.
They're all gone, and they're all gone. And when I, I've been going around to each of these town, like, Republican clubs and things like that, and I say to everyone, and they enjoy hearing it because they know it's true, like, I have a wife, I'm about to have my third kid. We've decided to raise our, we've decided to stay here and raise our kids here. That's, there's, there's something to that, and we need more of that. We need to not only, not only attract younger people, younger families to come to the state. We need, forget that. We need to just keep the ones that we have from leaving. They're all leaving. And it's a cost of living issue, it's a quality of life issue, and these are all things that I think if we have someone like us on the Board of Commissioners and the county level, some checks and balances, we can have another set of eyeballs or three sets of eyeballs, hopefully, on what's going on in order to just reduce the tax burden that we have as much as possible, and things of that nature.
I think what you've said is, there's one thing that really sticks out to me, is that we need, we need people who are fighters. Like, people who won't just, like, give up and accept what's, like, this is what it's gonna be. And that's one of the reasons why I got involved, is just because I felt that, like, how can I complain about something if I'm not actually doing it?
Totally.
At least trying.
Totally.
I don't have to be successful, but I'm trying.
Yeah.
You know, and we're small business owners, right? Like, if we have an idea about something or do something, if we just say, "Oh, yeah, it's a good idea," and don't really act upon that, then we get, you get nothing.
Yeah.
And so my mantra, part of me was like, don't say, like I say to people, complain all you want, but you have no right to complain if you don't get involved, which is mean going out to vote for the primary, going out to vote for the general election, getting involved, volunteering your time, running for the school board. You care about, I see people who are on social media all the time that say, "I care about children, this and that," but like.
And they don't teach anything.
Yeah. We'll bleep that out, but you know, they don't get involved. Like, why aren't you getting involved locally? That just, then that just shows everyone that you actually do care, you know?
You think, Pop? I don't hear you anymore. I still don't hear anything. I don't hear you, no. I hear me. I don't hear me. There you go. I hear me. I hear you. Got it.
We're having, anybody who wants to work and help us out, please come on by. I'm a one-man show today, so I apologize.
I think you're lucky. I told you that, because I think we would've wasted the next 40 minutes.
Always give me, I love feedback. I love criticism, because, you know, actually, that's what makes me better, you know? And when I make mistakes, I make mistakes, and I'll make it right there.
I think you just hit the thing, but yes, you're totally.
I was riled up, you know?
Totally. It happens to me.
And you see, like, I mean, we need people who are, you know, who want, who want to be engaged, who want to part, you have to participate. Like, you cannot say all this nonsense or complain about this and that and this, that if you don't participate, if you don't spend the time. You know, we live in a country where we can actually go and vote. I don't think people realize that in other places, in other countries, people aren't even given that option, you know? And we can't take that for granted. And I think we're living in a society right now where people just take a lot of things for granted. Like, being able to drive to a grocery store and choose whatever it is that you want to eat off shelves that are fully stocked in a 20,000-foot building, you know? Like, we have so many options. And I just hope, when I say I want younger people to get involved, because it's hard to change, you know, hard to teach an old dog new tricks, right? But we can reach out to the younger people, and that's what gives me a lot of hope when I see someone like you. You're younger than me, so when I see that passion, and when I see you on social media, which I want you to talk about too a little bit, like, how you're engaging, and you're putting yourself out there, and you can receive blowback, but it doesn't seem like you care, because you believe in something so strongly, and it's so important to you and your livelihood and what you believe in, and for your family and for people to know, and that's why you have this following, and that's why people, like, are following you and commenting about what you're saying, what you're saying and doing. Please, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so you mentioned a bunch of stuff there. I wanted to add a couple of different things. First, yes, 100%, we all need to be involved by voting, but sometimes voting's not enough, right? Sometimes you need to be outspoken. Yeah, it's a start, absolutely, and we need more, we need more votes, totally. But it, but it starts with more people like you and like myself and others as well, just getting involved, right? You gotta get involved. We need, you need to build a coalition of people who spread our values. My values have, have changed very little, other than, you know, just getting new information and basing it off of that. Being a conservative from New Jersey and Bergen County is frankly who I am. It's my identity. So no one wants to see more of what we stand for in the public spectrum, in the public sphere, more than I do. So you asked about, you know, social media and stuff. I was always, you know, being in real estate and stuff, I was always a bit nervous, as everyone else is or was, about putting my political stuff out there. Everyone talks about politics all the time, and it can get a little nauseating. I totally understand that, no matter what side, people get sick of it. But, and maybe it's not for everyone, but for me, I've been, I have not been involved in local or even county or state politics until extremely recently, a few months, that's it. But I've always been heavily invested and into the national political spectrum. Going back to, you know, I was not proud to say it, but I was 14 years old or whatever, defending the Iraq War, right? Which was obviously a huge mistake, but I was 14, so you can give me a pass on that, hopefully. So this is something I've followed very, very closely for a long period of time, on the national issues. So it's extremely, extremely important to me, like I said, to get more people like us out there. I started getting actually into the Second Amendment and into firearms only about 2018 or so, not that long ago. I, my family's not, was not in the military. My family is not in law enforcement, so it was, we never had a gun or a firearm in the house at all. So, you know, it was always frankly something that was a bit taboo to even think about, because you hear all these crazy, you know, mistakes and accidents happening and things like that. But I started getting involved in it once I started realizing how important it was, since it's right in the Constitution as a Second Amendment, right? It's like, okay, politically, this is like who we are. But in New Jersey, you were never able to carry a firearm up until the Bruin decision, two or two and a half years ago, where the Supreme Court decided that it basically forced blue states like this one, that we have to, that they have to give out carry permits before they, you needed a justifiable need. And they would not give it out to anybody other than politically connected people.
Right.
Very fair system. So New Jersey and other blue states like it were forced to start giving out carry permits. Once you're able to carry a firearm, to me, like, it was like a total game changer. Because it's like, okay, now this is like really something that, that is even more important now, right? So when I did that, I always wanted to start a YouTube channel. I had a YouTube channel on my real estate stuff that we built up to like, I don't know, 7,000 or 8,000 subscribers or something, but frankly, it was getting a little boring. I'm not passionate about real estate like I am about political stuff. So I said, "You know what? I'm switching from this channel to a second, I'm gonna create a Second Amendment channel here based on New Jersey Second Amendment issues and stuff." So I've basically been just like dialoguing my process on this YouTube channel, carrying a firearm every day, getting my concealed carry license, someone who, in New Jersey, which is totally new and foreign to me. And we've, you know, I've built up, or we've built up a pretty good community here. We have, you know, maybe 13,000 subscribers on YouTube, on Instagram, maybe another 8,000 or so, so you're looking at like 20,000 people. They're all like-minded, they're all in New Jersey, and they all see the same opportunity that I do, that we have, we have a chance here, I would say a once-in-a-generation opportunity, that Trump and his movement, our movement, has given us nationally, to finally get some people like us in positions where, as I mentioned before, we can at least be at the table when big decisions are being made. Another main reason why I wanted to do that YouTube channel was to just, to your point before, just kind of de-stigmatize it, right? Like, like, oh, like, someone sees a picture of a firearm, and it just, in New Jersey, and it just gets spooked. It's like, well, why? You know, like, so no one else was doing it. I don't think anyone else even still is doing it. That's probably the only, I'm not, because I don't feel like I'm very good at it. I'm not an expert, per se, but I'm just putting myself out there and our ideas out there, yeah. And people really respond pretty positively to it, because they see that a lot, there's a lot more people like us out there than, than we think. And we've just let it get to a point where we're kind of, kind of controlled in this area by a democratic machine, I would say. And the only way you change that is to just get out there, build, build communities, build coalitions, meet with people that are like-minded to you, and do something that, and act on your values. You can't just sit, as you mentioned before, you can't just sit and bitch and complain all the time. Because frankly, at the, you eventually get tired of complaining, right? You either have to move, or you gotta do something about it.
I'm all about learning and educating people. Can you share a little bit about the concealed carry process?
Sure.
Because it is, for anyone who is new to it, it's, there are a bunch of hurdles to jump through. I mean, it's still not as straightforward, and it's more straightforward, it's easier, but I feel that there's not a, like, a great explanation of the process. Maybe I'm wrong. You know, I've been considering it also to get my concealed carry as well. Can you share about that process, or maybe like that process of how you went through it?
Sure.
So that the people can get a little more comfortable and we can de-stigmatize.
Sure, absolutely. So, yeah, so when they first came out with the Bruin decision, and New Jersey had to be giving out these permits, it was a bit of a mess, as you would expect. They probably weren't expecting it, so everything was going through the county, and that was taking forever. Eventually, it got switched to go through the towns and the state police website. So now it's actually fairly, I wouldn't say easy, but fairly simple to actually apply. You gotta, you know, there's, you go on the state police website and you apply there, you do have to get, take a qualification course from a firearms instructor. It's not super hard. You know, you need non-family references and things like that. It's actually fairly simple now to do so. The, what the state of New Jersey and other states like it have decided to do, since there's nothing they can, there's not much that they can do to stop people from getting their carry permit, they've made it, they've tried to make it almost impossible to legally carry it in certain locations. They said, "Okay, if we have to give out these carry permits, we're just gonna make everywhere you can possibly carry illegal to carry." Where, you know, so they, we ended up calling that, that was termed the Carry Killer Bill, where that was essentially the phrase, because that was their intent, like, okay, we're gonna give you a permit, but you're not gonna be able to actually use this thing. It's been going back and forth. Well, let me explain what it is. Among other things, the biggest part of the Carry Killer Bill was sensitive locations. So they said, "Okay, you can't carry in a restaurant that serves alcohol. You can't carry in a, in a, whatever, a state building, a town building. You can't carry in even a post office. You can't carry even in a school parking lot." There's a whole bunch. You could check online. Check my YouTube channel, actually. That's been going back and forth, where right now, it's like in limbo. I'm no attorney. There's other organizations that keep track of these things. New Jersey Firearms Owners Syndicate, Joe Laporta does a great job of that. News 2A as well, and JRPC, and the CNJFO. But as of right now, it's like, half of them you can, half of them you can't. Hopefully, it eventually goes to the Supreme Court and all of them are shut down. That's, that's what the, the end goal is. But, you know, even, even in that community, I see on like my, a lot of people follow me, and like, they'll comment or message me on Instagram, like, "Oh, I," basically, just like the whole political process, put their hands up, "Screw that. They made it so hard. Screw that, screw them, so I'm not even gonna do it." Like, no, do it. It's your Second Amendment right, right? It's your right to do so. You're, I believe that you have a right to self-defense, okay? And don't let them, don't let them win. Like, if you're just giving up, that's what, that's what they're trying to do. They're also, they also made it extremely expensive as well. I have to, I have to go renew my carry permit very soon. It's another, you know.
Every two years, sorry.
Every two years, it's a few hundred dollars or whatever it is, which to me is unconstitutional and unreasonable. And, and, you know, frankly, you could start even getting into, well, who is that affecting? Like, I'm fortunate enough where maybe $200 isn't a big deal. Other people, it is. And maybe those are the people that may actually need it more than I do, technically. So, yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of issues with that, but I'm getting a big positive reaction to what I'm putting out there from, from this community, and I don't think it's, you know, it's not a huge community compared to some other standards, but they're very vocal and they're very passionate, and they see that I'm putting my stuff out there. And hopefully, I'm inspiring them to do the same. That's really, that was really.
How long did that process take to get that carry, concealed carry?
So I actually had to apply twice, believe it or not. I went through the county, and it was taking forever. And then they eventually sent me a letter in the mail saying, "You were, you were denied because your application was incomplete." I think I left like my employer phone number empty, because I'm just self-employed. But it was, but they said, "You're allowed to go reapply with the, with the town police." So it was basically just like, "We're not doing this anymore." You go, so I was out a few hundred dollars just with that. But from, right now, it's gonna depend on which town you're in. Some towns are easier, some towns are harder. You know, you're supposed to be able to get it within like 30 days or so, but, but a lot of towns are dragging their feet. But it's getting better. And the only reason it's getting better is because more people are doing it. We just hit, we just hit 70,000 permit carry, permit to carry holders in the whole state, which is, which is good, but there's a lot of room. There's nine million people here, so. And as much as Phil, the Governor Murphy, the Attorney General, they all were trying to scare people, say it was gonna be like the Wild West. And if I had, I had family members tell me this, when I said, "I'm getting my, I'm gonna carry a handgun every day." Like, "Oh, what are you gonna, shoot someone?" are you gonna go shoot someone when you get into road rage? That hasn't happened.
Yeah.
In, in over two, over two years, uh, the permits to carry in New Jersey have been out here. It has not happened as far as I can see.
It keeps things actually more civil, I think.
Firearm, uh, crime, crime is down. Uh, firearm crime is down in the state. And now they're trying to take credit for that, right? We're, meaning it has nothing to do with the 70,000 of us that are carrying on a consistent basis. Um, but yeah.
Well, you see that in the other states that do have concealed carry and just how much better they are to, like, to live in, you know? And you see how people are. And hopefully we get more people to apply for these concealed carry permits and.
I hope so. I, I, I really do. Cause it's, I mean, listen, you always have to, to me, it's a fundamental right, self-defense, right? I mean, it was, it's, it's, it's unreasonable to not allow, uh, uh, everyday men and women to protect themselves when politicians or celebrities or whatever are surrounded by armed body, bodyguards. That's, uh, unreasonable. It's unjust and it's unfair.
Points well taken. So let's get back to Burn County though. Um, what do you see are your biggest challenges in Bergen County right now?
You mean, uh, like if I get elected on the board of commissioners?
What you see and what you think that maybe you can do to help change the course of, of direction for Bergen County?
Well, of course, it starts with just winning an election, right? Uh, Republicans haven't won an election in 13 years. Just getting someone like me, even if it's just one, never mind three, is gonna help tremendously in regards to keeping an eye on everything that's going on. Uh, no one wants rubber stamp approval in this county. Um, I think it's a winning issue if people even just knew about it. Um, but once you actually get on the, on the board of commissioners, you know, we have to look at a lot of, we, a lot of people obviously talk about DOGE on the federal level. You need something to audit a lot of these budgets and these, uh, bids and these contracts that are, that are being given out to, uh, you know, to certain vendors and certain contractors and all these sorts of things. You just need another set of eyeballs on it because like anything, when, when a certain person or a certain party has just carte blanche rule for a certain period of time, things tend to get a little bit sloppy. And I would never, um, uh, accuse anyone of doing anything nefarious or whatever, without actually knowing and getting in and looking into the details with specific proof or evidence. But I think it would be, the people of Bergen County would be very well served to have someone, to have people from, from a, a wide array of different perspectives, um, dealing with where they're putting their money. I mean, I looked at my, uh, my property tax bill and 13% of it, I don't know if it's the same for everyone, but 13% of it goes to the county. That's a, you know, that's a substantial amount. And if you look at the county budget, um, it's up to almost about $800 million a year. That's a lot, right? Um, and it's, it's blue, it's gone up substantially. Um, and that's not to say that we don't, we pay a lot of property taxes, maybe the most in the country in this county. Uh, so people expect certain services to work and run efficiently and effectively. They expect our parks to be nice and taken care of. They, they like the golf courses, right? All that stuff. Um, and, and that's good and that's fine. And I, I agree with a lot of that. My problem mostly is, uh, and obviously you can go even more simple than that, right? Like roads, right? Like roads are a disaster. Our bridges are a disaster. It's like where, you're spending $800 million a year. Where is this money going? New Jersey as a state has the highest, speaking of like road, um, repair. New Jersey as a state has the highest cost per mile of road repair. Why is that?
Why is that?
Why? Why New Jersey? It's a small state area wise. Even population wise, it's not, it's not California. It's, so why is it the highest, one of the highest in the country? It's like a million, I forget the number, a million dollars a mile, a million and a half dollars a mile. That, that, that shouldn't be, right? So you gotta look at the budget. You gotta look at the bids that are being put in. You wanna make sure everything is, is run properly and efficiently and effectively and just get our government working efficiently.
What do you say to those people who, on the other side, you know, the Democrats, a group of Democrats, um, organized by FLOP are primaring, primary, or do, going to primary against incumbent Democrats who are there. And they'll say, well, these guys, the FLOP team, they're gonna do that. Why do we, why, why do we need you? You know, like, I understand we, you know, like, what would you say to them? The people who would vote?
The same thing, the same thing that they would say if, uh, you know, two Republicans were going after each other. It's two, two sides of the same coin. And I don't know why they're getting, uh, primary challenged. Uh, their incumbents are getting primary. I have no idea. I don't, um, spend any time, uh, of my day so far anyway. I'm still early into the local politics. Spend zero minutes per day, uh, keeping track of what the Democrats are doing right now during the primary process. I could do with that, you know, uh, God willing, I get through the, uh, primary. Um, but yeah, I, I wouldn't trust, once again, two sides of the same coin. I wouldn't trust, uh, all Democrats that have a wide array of different perspect, especially the Democrat party where I think they are more in line, good, better and different. They're more, they get more in line with each other than the Republicans do, at least in this state, it seems like. It seems like there's a lot more, there are a lot more infighting on the, on the, uh, repub, in the Republican party than the Democrat party. And the proof is in the pudding. And I think that's a big reason why, is that, you know, politics and life in general, everyone is always gonna have different disagreements on certain things. Um, but they keep it behind closed doors, it seems like, you know, the, even just on the, the governor's level, um, they're not having the same level of going back and forth as the Republicans are. And, you know, when that happens out in public, voter sees that and says, hey, like, that you guys don't exactly have your stuff together.
It hurts us.
Um, yeah, yeah.
It hurts us.
And that's why, that's why I, I think that's a, a decent reason why we haven't won on a county level for so long. I mean, and, and I had, uh, I haven't been involved in, for the past 13 years, but it seems like to me that that's the, uh, that's our party's biggest problem in this area. But I think it's, I, I think it's getting better, I hope.
How has the community reacted to you? I mean, you've been out campaigning, I assume?
Yeah.
I'm sure you have been. You've been knocking on doors and meeting people at a lot of different events. What have been, they've been saying to you?
Well, I mean, to be honest, it's the primary still, so we're really speaking to mostly all Republicans.
Oh, yeah, of course.
So it's mostly positive. You know, we'll see what happens in the general election, right? It'll be a much, uh, uh, more difficult conversation to have or, or, uh, vote to earn, as it should be. Um, but yeah, we, I've had very, very good and positive reactions from, you know, the door knocking and really the, the, the two biggest things I've been doing so far, whether it's for my campaign or not, is one for the campaign. I've been going a lot to, uh, you know, all the Republican parties and the municipal chairs and things of each town. Um, they, they tend to, they, I, I think they, you know, based on what they're telling me, they tend to like that I'm new, you know, a fresh face, uh, that I'm a little bit of a, as you are, a little bit of a younger genera, a new generation that can hopefully, you know, keep the ball rolling or get the ball rolling in the county and start winning some elections. So they, they are appreciative of that. And then on the, forgetting even just my campaign, I would be doing it even if I wasn't running for office, is I've been volunteering for Early Vote Action, uh, Scott Pressler's organization, sitting at a table, mostly at Gun for Hire, Gun Range at Woodland Park, uh, but other places as well. And.
Were you recruited for that or you what?
No, um, after, after Trump won in November, you know, you see, I, I kinda learned a bit about, I knew about him a little bit before that, uh, about, uh, Scott Pressler. And then obviously like, like a Charlie Kirk or something on a more national level. And I saw that they, even before the election, I just was hoping that it was actually gonna end, cause you never, you can't trust anything on, online until you actually see the results. I saw what they did for, you know, months and, and years even, in regards to the voter rolls and stuff across the country. And I just respected the hell out of it. Like they, they, they learned from their mistakes. I don't mean to pick on those two. I'm just saying as, as a party, uh, on the grassroots level, learn from their mistakes in 2020, like kind of rejecting the early voting and things like that. Put the work in for, for years and, and, um, it resulted in a, in a pretty massive Trump win. And I just, it, it inspired me frankly, to, uh, to get involved myself because I wasn't before that. So make, like the day after or something, I had, uh, all of my, uh, dark MAGA stuff on, a hat and a shirt and stuff. And I posted it and I, I think I mentioned Scott Pressler in there or something, like dark MAGA in New Jersey. It was a nice day. And, uh, like he followed me back and I was like, okay. And then he, I reached out to, um, uh, the, the woman, uh, her name is Susan, that's, uh, you know, runs like their events and stuff. And she's been great. I've gotten very friendly with her. And, um, she says I was the first New Jersey, uh, volunteer. I don't know if she's lying or not, but she, they're doing a great job. Um, yeah, without me, I'm, I'm, I take no credit for it. Um, but yeah, that's, that's how that, that started.
Do you have a message for the younger people? Um, I know you said, we need to start working with the people who are already kind of involved or like, but like, the young people for me is our future. So I feel like they are very important to what we're trying to do. Do you have any message to them? Like what, is something that you wanna share or maybe a story of like, what got you really involved? I know you said you have these concerns and, uh, sometimes like for me, there's something really personal. Um, you know, I have a young boy and I want him to partake in the public schools, but seeing what's going on with all the curriculum changes and all those kinds of things that are happening, uh, I need to defend, you know, his, him, you know, I will protect him. And that was really personal to me. Like for you, I know you have a family. You have almost, you're gonna have your third child, your third, third child's on the way. Um, I'm sure there's a family perspective from that, um, for your children. Um, but is there anything that you'd like to share to kind of maybe inspire, you know, and to?
Well, as you, as I'm sure you would agree, uh, everything changes once you have, you start having a family.
10%.
Right? Like everything that you thought that you believed so strongly in, if it, if it has anything to do with protecting or serving your kids or even, you know, other kids like them, it just got ramped up like 10 notches, right? So just that alone changed my life, as I'm sure it does many other parents. And, you know, it would really just be, I, I don't know if I have a specific story per se. My grandfather, uh, was a, was a huge part of my life. He frankly raised me, uh, from here, Palisades Park. And, uh, he, he instilled a ton, a ton, a ton of those traditional family values. And I know people like always use like family values as like a general term, but like specifically like, you know, this is what you're, this is what you're leaving. You're leaving your reputation and you're leaving your family. Like that's, that's your legacy when we all go and we leave this earth. So, uh, once I started having kids of my own, I started taking that very, very seriously. And once you start taking that very, very seriously, you see out there that there's a lot of stuff, especially today, that you are gonna need to shield your kids from. And I'm no helicopter parent. I like put, putting my kids out there and even getting exposed to different people and perspectives and stuff like I value that. Uh, but there are, there are, are, are forces that will indoctrinate your kids to think a certain way, to act a certain way. And I think a lot of parents, uh, previously, hopefully it's changing, kind of have, have just gone along with the flow because either maybe they just don't, a lot of them just don't realize and they're just taking the path of least resistance. Um, but you gotta stick to your, your, your moral grounds, right? Like if, 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 just speaking to the kids, cause it's not just the, the schools, it's, it's everywhere else as well, right? If, if Disney comes out with something that you don't want your kids to be involved in, you can cancel Disney, right? You can not go to Disney. Oh my gosh, right? Not going to Disney. You cannot go. Um, you can do these things. You can vote with your mind, with your wallet, with your, with your mouth. And you could tell people why you're not. I think we need more of that. I mean, you know, not complaining, but just like, no, I'm, I'm out. I'm not taking, I'm not, I'm not supporting a company or, um, you know, a brand that doesn't, that doesn't align, you know, it doesn't, they don't have to align with my values. Just don't, don't go contradictory to my values and, and we'll, we'll be okay. And then also supporting people, supporting companies and stuff that, that, that.
That do.
That do. Yeah. I find that very important. I think that, you know, you see, uh, certain companies and stuff that are, uh, starting to make content and things that are more traditional. I, I think the country is starting to lean a little bit more towards that. You know, there's ebbs and flows and, um, but I, I think that's a good, a good sign for, for people like us.
Yeah. I think we learned a lot about you today. Uh, I wanna just give you the floor for any final thoughts or any final words or a pitch or I don't know, but just something that you wanna, uh, share to the, to the voter. I mean, we have your primary, uh, election day coming up on June 10th.
Yes.
So we're getting close. We're getting close. How many candidates are running?
Yes. I'll just talk about that, um, cause they probably learned enough about me and where I stand. I'm pretty.
I wanna learn more to be honest, but you know, I know you're busy on time, but please, you know, anything that you'd like to share.
I'm pretty black and white when it comes to what I believe and stuff. And, but I, I never wanna make people think that I'm like, um, uh, let me just say this. My, my, my values will have and will not ever change. That being said, I don't want people to think that you, I'm gonna go in there and be a flamethrower because I'm not. You can stand on your values and also be agreeable and, um, you know, to people that have different perspectives and ideas and values. When, when I think someone is wrong, I will definitely say that and I will push my values as much as I can. Um, but you need to get along with people. They need to like you and respect you as a person, as a, as a man or a woman. So that's, that's my goal if and when I'm elected to the, the board of commissioners. I'm not going in there and saying, you know, you're corrupt and you're corrupt, cause that's not gonna get you anywhere. Uh, but in regards to the actual election, yes. So this June, uh, June 10th is the primary. There's five of us going for three, uh, three open seats on the Republican side. And then six, as you mentioned before, six, including three incumbents going on the, uh, the Democrat side. That's actually very interesting to me, uh, that incumbents would be challenged. I don't know why. I think it has something to do with the governor's race. Um, but as you know as well, there's a different county, there's no more county line. So that kind of throws into a, like into, um, uh, people don't know exactly how that's gonna play out. Because before you would get the endorsement from let's say the Bergen County Republican Organization, which I did, and I'm, I'm proud to say that I did so. Um, but they, they would just put you under the first line and then people would go in and blah, 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 blah. And it gives you like a 20% uh, boost. You don't have that anymore. You have columns. Um, so when you go in there, I think I'm 3C, I think it is. And then my two running mates, John Denise and Andrew Slobodowsky are 4C and 5C. Um, so it's a little bit different. Should be interesting to see. Um, but, uh, what, what, did you have another question? I've, that I kinda rambled a little bit there.
No, no, just, I, just, uh, anything that you'd like to say. I think you shared a lot. Um, look, uh, Jay, I'm rooting for you.
Thank you.
I think, um, everyone out there, uh, I think you have a lot to bring to the table. And so.
I've been enjoying the process tremendously. I've, being here my whole life, I, I, there's 70 towns in Bergen County, right? So it's, it's a different race than a school board or even like a mayor of a town. Uh, I'm gonna need a lot of votes and I'm going, I, I know all the towns in Bergen County just from my own experience, but I'm, I've been enjoying the process so much because each time I go to these towns, the Republican meetings or door knocking, I'm learning something new each time. Um, you know, about their concerns, about what they, they think, um, you know, should be done on the county level. So I've been, uh, really appreciate it. The primaries, one thing, the general, uh, hopefully will, will be another. And, uh, you know, hopefully we can start, you know, flipping New Jersey and Bergen County from blue to red a little bit, at least make it purple.
Amen, amen. Hey, do you have any events coming up? Anything that you wanna talk?
Yeah, well, I actually have, I have a, a fundraiser actually, um, on May 22nd. It's at, uh, Demora Restaurant in Norwood, which I'm not sure if you're, if you're familiar with. It's really just to get my, uh, my campaign kinda started on the fundraising level. Never fundraised before, but, um, I think it'll be, end up being a good event. If you want more information, you could check me out on, um, Instagram and stuff, at J Costa USA. You'll see it right there.
At J Costa.
Twitter and X as well. And YouTube, J Costa USA.
Awesome. Look, that wraps up today's episode of The Inside Lines. A big thank you to Jay Costa for joining us and sharing his vision for Bergen County. You know, please show him your support by following him on social media. Uh, whether you agree or disagree, what matters most is staying informed, asking questions and engaging with the people who wanna represent us. As always, if you found this conversation valuable, please make sure to follow, like or share this episode with your friends and neighbors. Look, we've, we're getting some really cool comments. Um, I'm responding to some of these comments. They're, they're, some of them are funny. Some of them are good. Some of them are inquisitive. So please, uh, get involved and get engaged and don't forget to subscribe to us so you don't miss another episode. Um, I'm George. Thanks for spending time with, with us. We'll see you next time on The Inside Lines, where we go beyond the headlines into the issues that matter most to New Jerseans and keep you connected to the politics, power and people sharing our state.